Morning, everyone. Why don't we go ahead and get settled for today's meeting? Thank you kindly. Appreciate you being here for our Board of Commissioners meeting this November 8th, 2022. I'm pleased today that we have Pastor Brandon Nichols of Mercy Hill Church here with us. He will be providing our invocation. That will be followed by the pledge brought by Deputy John Galloway with Field Operations. For those of you who are willing and able, please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let's pray together. Father, in the beginning, you created the first people in your image and gave them the task to cultivate and keep your good creation. As image bearers, we likewise are representatives of you, vice regents, reflecting your goodness and glory and tasked to make something of what you've given to us. So today, I pray for our commissioners, who are tasked to cultivate and keep our community and to ensure its flourishing. May you remind them today that they are stewards, not owners, that they steward your good gifts and the futures of those whom they represent. May you grant them wisdom and insight as they make decisions that affect very real people in our community. May they conduct their business with humility, not thinking of themselves first, but thinking of others first, and help them to exercise their responsibility with love, obeying the very words of Jesus, that we are to love our neighbors as ourselves, and following the example of Jesus, who laid down his own life for us in our place. May our county be a place of flourishing marked by both justice and mercy and both grace and truth. And Father, it is election day. No matter the results, could you help our community respond with grace and humility instead of the pride, manipulation, and foolishness that we've seen in our nation in recent elections? May the grace of the Lord Jesus Christ be with us all. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our meeting is called to order. Pastor, we're going to pray a prayer of non-foolishness in this atmosphere today as we are here this Tuesday, Election Tuesday, and hope that everyone who has the ability to vote has done so or will do so. Commissioners, before we get started today, we have a number of non-agenda items that I want to go ahead and just take care of at the top of this meeting with your support. And so I'm going to read those in and ask that we add them to the agenda as I will share. The first one is, well, I will move that we approve these non-agenda items to the agenda as follows. The first one is to authorize the settlement of Margaret Mary Hayes versus the County Sheriff's Office in the State Court of Cobb County, Georgia, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions. And that is to be added to consent. The second one is to accept and approve an allocation of the third tranche of federal funding to local governments under American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, ERA 2. That will be added to the finance tab. And the third is to present a proclamation to Cobb Solicitor General Barry E. Morgan, recognizing his 34 years of service to our Cobb community, and that will be added to presentations. So with that motion, I ask for a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0 with those non-agenda items now added to our agenda. First up, we will begin with our presentations, and the first one is to present a proclamation to the National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution, American Indians Committee, and that will be brought by Commissioner Burrell.
Good morning, everyone. It's very exciting to have the DAR up here again for, usually they're here for Constitution Day, but today we're here for American Indians and Indigenous Peoples' Day. So, whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and Indigenous Peoples, and whereas the contribution of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, and whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August of 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month, and whereas in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities, have been planned. Now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November as National American Indian Heritage Month in Cobb County and urge all of our citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. This the eighth day of November 2022.
Thank you so much. We are from the Fielding Lewis DAR chapter. I'm Linda Lopez. This is Betty Mackey and Carol Palmer with me. And in November, we celebrate the legacy and heritage of our Native Americans, both in Georgia and in our country. Footprints have been found in the New Mexico area that date from 20,000 to 23,000 years ago. The Cherokee Indians are one of the largest groups of American Indians who live in the state of Georgia. As you may know, there are many historic Cherokee sites in our state, and I urge you to visit those and learn about their culture. Delonica, New Acota, Lost Mountain, Cherokee Garden, and Green Meadows are just a few of the Georgia sites with a strong Cherokee heritage. We are proud to support Indian youth at Bacon College and Indian Youth Camps. Thank you so much for your support today as you present this proclamation.
Good to see you.
All right, here we go. Thanks.
Thank you.
And she made cookies.
It's enough to share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll pass them back.
Okay, and I believe Commissioner Burrell will now be accompanied by Commissioner Richardson for our next presentation to present certificates of recognition to members of the Girl Scouts and the Chattahoochee Service Group, who have recently received an award that they will talk more about during their presentation. For those of you here for this particular presentation, please feel free to join us up front. Calling all Girl Scouts.
Calling all Girl Scouts. Fortunately, they had the day off from school today, so were able to join us. And there are over 40 that received these awards, but due to time, we're going to read out the bronze, one bronze, one silver, and one gold, and then our assistants are going to hand them out to all the girls as we call your name. What a great group. Where's your leader? You're supposed to be up here?
It's a lot of me.
Yes. Okay, come on up. Which one's Brooke? Okay, good to see you. Yeah, we want all the support up here. And we'll be taking pictures for y'all, or you can give your phone to one of our assistants to do. Okay, so I'm going with the bronze first. We're going bronze to gold. And this will be presented to Caroline Colley. Caroline, you want to come up here with me? She's not here? Okay, I'm sorry. We'll get her certificate to y'all. Yeah. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulate you on earning the Girl Scout Bronze Award. The Bronze Award is the highest award that a Girl Scout Junior can earn. You were able to identify a problem and implement a sustainable solution, and you completed 20 hours or more of service to earn the award. Congratulations on your award, and thank you for your contribution to the Cobb community. And everyone has signed them, so we have Alexis Bruce. Marley Spatt. Lauren Schmidt. Oh, I'm supposed to go.
Yeah.
There's a lot going on today. Marlo Cornwell and Harper Cornwell. Lily Evans. Madison Jobbs. She's not here? How about Lorelei McGahy? She's not here either. Peyton Munn. Peyton's here. We did Lauren Schmidt and Marley Spatt?
Lauren.
Okay. Zoe Struminger. Okay, that's all the bronzes. Let's give them a hand.
And the silver. So this is, there are two others that we're going to call out. Here is one example of the silver, a silver award for Catherine Benninger. Is she here? No. Okay. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you on earning the Girl Scout Silver Award. The Silver Award is the highest award that a Girl Scout Cadet can earn. You have shown, you have identified an area of need and implemented a sustainable solution and completed at least 50 hours of service to earn the award. Congratulations on your award and thank you for your contribution to the Cobb community this eighth day of November. So our silver award winners, we've got Anna Cheever. Emily Ginsburg. Maddie Hyatt. Marissa McEchrin. Mackenzie Nicolau. And correct me if I say your name incorrectly. Alex Pritt. Jennifer Simons. And Kobe Wilson. Congratulations, all the silver award recipients. And the very last one is the gold award, and we have, we have the winner for that one or the achievement here. Hadley Ackerman? Is Hadley?
They're in college. Those girls are in college. They weren't able to be here.
Okay, well, congratulations to Hadley. The readout for Hadley is the Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you on earning the Girl Scout Gold Award, the highest and most prestigious award in Girl scouting. You have shown you aspire to transform an idea and vision for change into an actionable plan with measurable, sustainable, and far-reaching results. Sounds like my talk track. Congratulations on your award and thank you for your contribution to the community. So thank you, Hadley. Leave all of the Girl Scout awards, so do any of the, any members of the support, the leaders, want to say any words about these girls?
I would like to thank Commissioner Burrell for inviting us to this occasion today, to this meeting, to recognize the community service that the girls have performed and to encourage them to continue because they're going to become the future leaders of our community. And thank you to the entire board for having us today. Girls, I'm so proud of you, all of your leaders, and the entire Chattahoochee Service Unit is very proud of you. Congratulations.
Awesome. Great job. Okay, we're going to get a picture. So everybody getting rows.
All right, I can see everybody. Ready? Here we go. Three, two, one, we're done. Thank you.
For our girls, as they walk away, I just want to commend you for all that you've done. I served as a Girl Scout growing up. My mother was a leader, and I know it's a big labor of love, and you are our future leaders. So thank you, Girl Scouts. With that being stated, we're going to have our final presentation, and I'm going to ask, yes, go ahead. Oh, sure.
Just wanted to say, we got two more. Talia Nader and Emma Pike, who won their bronze award, so.
If the girls, Ross, did you want to get their, did you want to get their picture, Ross? If those two, they were in the picture, okay, thank you. Finally, for our third presentation, I'm going to ask for all the commissioners to come up front and for everyone who's here with the Solicitor's Office to also join us up front as we recognize Barry Morgan. The DA's office is also welcome if you would like. Anyone who's within our judicial system, who's here to help support and honor Barry Morgan, please join us up front. Commissioners, if you can come, if you can swing down here, we can have some fighting chance of getting them in. We're going to have to do double rows. Everyone's not going to fit here. All right, if you guys can just come filling in front of those here. It's okay to be in front. It's okay. Come on, don't be shy. In fact, we can have some over here on this wall. Okay. Good to see you.
We need more people on that side. Well, that was the whole room, wasn't it?
It's everybody.
Solicitor Morgan, you bring a party. Well, we're here to present a proclamation to recognize our Cobb Solicitor. Whereas Cobb Solicitor General Barry E. Morgan has made an impact in Cobb County by expanding the domestic violence unit to ensure cases get attention, expanding the victim witness unit to ensure victims' rights are protected, and expanding the diversion program to allow for rehabilitation for some misdemeanor crimes. And whereas from 1988 until 1992, he has served as an Assistant District Attorney prosecuting narcotics and organized crime cases in Cobb County, and in 1993, became the Chief Assistant Solicitor General for Cobb State Court and served in that capacity until 1998. And whereas on March 4th, 1998, Governor Zell Miller appointed Morgan to Solicitor General for Cobb County. In this role, he has been responsible for the prosecution of all traffic, misdemeanor, and ordinance violations in Cobb County. Morgan was elected to this position six times, Commissioner Burrell, I think you'll get there, and most recently in 2018. He has overseen the prosecution of more than 2 million criminal misdemeanor cases during his time as Solicitor General, managed a staff of 70, and managed a 4 million-plus budget every year. He has served his entire legal career as a prosecutor. And whereas Morgan has served the Cobb County community on several civic and charitable associations, including the Cobb Chamber of Commerce, Live Safe Resources, Acworth, Kennesaw, and South Cobb Business Associations, and in 2008, he began his second four-year term as a member of the Prosecuting Attorneys Council of Georgia and served that body as Vice Chair for four years. During his tenure on that council, Morgan served as Chair of the Training Committee, developing training for all prosecutors in the state, and consistently receiving high marks on presentation reviews. He has also delivered sessions for prosecutors across the U.S. through the National District Attorneys Association. He was President of the Georgia Association of Solicitors General in 2001 and 2014. In 2001, Morgan was selected as Georgia Solicitor General of the Year and received the J. Roger Thompson Award for his work in the training of prosecutors of the state. That's a lot to be proud of. Now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor Barry Morgan for his unwavering commitment to our community, his leadership, and for 34 years of community service to our Cobb County. We proclaim that we urge the state of Georgia to name Barry Morgan as Solicitor General Emeritus before he retires. This the eighth day of November 2022. Congratulations.
I didn't think I was going to do that. Thank you. You mentioned that Governor Zell Miller, who in my mind is the greatest governor we've ever had in the state of Georgia, who had excellent vision back in 1990, always said that, that if you, if you are walking by a fence and there's a turtle on top of the fence post, you realize they didn't get there by themselves. Any accolades that I have achieved are because of these people. I am blessed that many, we were, we were talking about it, and probably over the last 25 years, we've had somewhere in the neighborhood of 400 to 500 lawyers come through our office who've gone on to achieve great things, like our district attorney and the former district attorney before him. The chief magistrate of Cobb County came from our office, and the former chief magistrate came from our office. Nine of the 12 judges that sit on state court have come through our office, and many community leaders and assistant DAs and assistant solicitors. And then I'd be remiss of the, of the support staff who have been with us, many of them forever, including Jennifer, who has been with us since 93? 93. And I couldn't, we couldn't do the things that we do without the people that support us. So any accolades that I enjoy is because of you, and I'm blessed that you have all been in my life. I'm sorry I didn't bring cookies or nice, but I did bring some, some beautiful folks up here, and I guess Go Dogs.
Oh, we won't hold that against you. Very good. Well, I'm sure you'll be honored in another form. I don't know if there's anyone else from your team that wanted to share anything before we wrap up.
I'll just say briefly, you know, I speak on behalf of, I think, everyone here. You've created an amazing work environment for all of us that have been a part of your team over the years. The county is blessed to have had you, had you been a leader as long as you have. Best wishes, congratulations in every future endeavor.
All right, we're going to have a picture, and I'm going to ask if you can help swing a little bit so we can center the Solicitor in the middle.
Y'all come around. Yeah, can you two go back? There we go. Perfect, thank you. All right, here we go. I can see everybody smile here. Three, two, one and a half, and done.
Ross, we're going to get a picture with the commissioners and Barry. Thank you.
Yes. It's like the halo over Barry's head.
All right, we are now moving on to our next tab. We have a public hearing, which will be brought by our DOT Director.
Good morning. Drew Wrestler, DOT. On March 14th, 2022, Congress passed the Consolidated Appropriations Act, which included congressionally-directed spending for Big Shiny Road Widening, Chattahoochee River Trail Pilot Phase II, and Cumberland Core Loop Segment E. These three projects are eligible under the federal, state, local match improvements component of the 2022 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program. In accordance with state law, the Board of Commissioners is required to conduct a public hearing prior to expending county funds of $100,000 or more to employ an independent cons-. of dollars. And there was a simple solution brought up at the meeting. There's a bush that, you know, the code, Uniform Traffic Control Code, controls obstruction of view in the right of ways. And there's a bush right there in that project, causes more accidents, and it can't seem to get anybody to just cut the bush down so that people can see when they're coming out of Papa John's building, because the bush obstructs the views, the cars that are in the McDonald's area coming from your left. So things are getting worse. We're definitely got in a happy time in our economy, and we should, you know, the reason why you want to widen roads and all these things is because you built more density, you brought more cars and more people, and at the same time, we don't want to use gasoline. And all the roads are paved with asphalt, which is the waste product of gasoline. And it's like, you gotta, you only get a 3% yield on asphalt out of a barrel of oil. And this is a road, this is a dead end. We won't be able to repave our roads if we go electric and we go hydrogen or whatever, because roads are paved with the waste from refining oil. And I keep asking people, what are we gonna do next? And I don't get an answer. I just get crickets. They even tried calling C.W. Matthews, because if they haven't figured this out, they're gonna look like the record industry, you know, trying to sell vinyl and then CDs, and the world's gone digital. So how in the world, you know, why are we spending a million dollars when we don't have the vision to see far enough down the road? What are we gonna pave the roads with? Bicycles need some hard substance, and we ran out of concrete in 2008 and steel, and that's why they triggered the whole recession.
Mr. Harfoot, you're three minutes up.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to address this matter and this matter only as part of the public hearing? Seeing none, Drew, I'll turn things back over to you.
That concludes the public hearing for us, unless you have any questions.
Okay, do Commissioners have any questions for Drew? Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
We are now on to public comment.
Thank you, Chairwoman. As the Board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. Please state your name, and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be addressed through the Chair. Public comment is not a dialogue, excuse me, with the Board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the Board. The comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, offensive, or slanderous, to that end, the Board encourages, regardless of the topic, the audience to be respectful and courteous to the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the Board or the administration of Cobb County Government. And just as a reminder, there is a timer on the podium to keep track of your time. That being said, the first public speaker is Carol Brown.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Carol Brown with Canton Road Neighbors. You'll bear with me as I try to read this. I want to briefly address the annexation request and rezoning of approximately 175 acres of land owned by the Montgomery heirs. We don't know if the county staff has finished their review of the annexation and Beazer site plan, and will object based on HB 489 or draft a letter of non-objection. I'm sure the staff is aware that the ARC declined to give the site plan a development of regional impact review because the application lowered the number of homes from 699 to 596. This is still a staggering volume of traffic to be absorbed by the narrow two-lane Bells Ferry Road that is already congested. Who will pay to widen the road? Will the city of Marietta share the cost of the road widening and traffic signals? Or will Cobb taxpayers be asked to pick up the tab in the next blast? The Phase III Barrett reliever won't be any help at all for this planned development. The transfer of 87.55 acres, including Laurel Lake and 61 acres, to be used as passive green space per the deed is a bargain. Laurel Lake Dam is classified as Cat 1, meaning loss of life would occur if the dam broke, say, during a 500-year flood. Hopefully, the grant funding will be available from FEMA, but if not, I believe it is in the long-term public interest for the county to repair the dam. Acquisition of 61 acres of green space to be left undeveloped and used by the public as a passive park is a cause for celebration. Here are some concerns. If the annexation into the city proceeds and the city approves the requested PRD, hopefully scaled back, will the public, meaning Cobb County residents and the city residents who don't live in the PRD, have access to the 61-acre green space? Will the proposed access road to the dam guarantee that access permanently exists? Will the city contribute to maintenance or cost of rebuilding what is to be a regional detention facility? If approved by the city, will Beazer Homes LLC be required to pay a fee in lieu of detention to Cobb County, or should they be required to build their own stormwater management facility? I imagine you've had the time to at least examine the PRD submitted to the city by Beazer Homes. You will see a band of green around the perimeter of their site plan. Are they using the county's 61 acres of green space as part of their site plan? This must not be allowed to happen. A PRD is required to have one acre of recreational space for every 50 homes. They should not try to co-op the county's new passive green space. We all hope that Beazer can be persuaded to submit a revised, more reasonable site plan to the city. At minimum, I hope that the county can file a letter of objection to the annexation and list some meaningful stipulations to be required. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Craig Harfoot.
Good morning. My name's Craig Harfoot. I guess we're the only two to speak today, because all the Republican and Democratic activists are poll watchers. Funny, though, ever since Roman Ekklesia, elections have been rigged. There's a, there's a candidate that's gonna win, and the rest are straw candidates. I mean, it's amazing how history just keeps rolling on. There was a little town in South Georgia, in Nashville, Marion County, and some local guys got caught stuffing the ballot box. Well, they got run out of town. They came to Atlanta, started a big lumber company. They went places. You can be assured, nothing's changed. Electronic voting machines? I mean, God, I'm gonna, this is election day. This is a big one. Al Gore, yeah, he won that election. Why do you think they paid him off? He became so rich through giving his job on Apple, getting to promote global warming, Nobel Peace Prize, that he was able to divorce his high school wife, you know? And that was the most unprecedented thing we ever saw in history. Hey, if they paid Trump off, maybe he would quit squawking. But what's really amazing, it goes back to the oil, back to the asphalt, and it's, I'm really convinced that our current president is just a tool of big oil, because their profits have been nothing but higher. And his base, he has killed his base, because inflating energy, supplying arms to Ukraine, all these things have just made the world a very dangerous place and made these oil guys really rich. And the solution is, you gotta have a stable price of oil. And I brought all that information to you before, and it hadn't changed from like 1900 through 1950. It was in the 20 cent range. Then the unfunded wars and the Federal Reserve and all that nonsense. I read up on the Federal Reserve. They were so, when they figured that out down in Jekyll Island, and it was Chase and some other Rockefeller interests that had property down there, they snuck these guys onto a private rail car, so nobody would see them get on, took them down there, and they came up with a framework for the Fed. You can look it up. And for 20 years, they were, they wouldn't talk about it, not a peep, no coverage. They were afraid of what people would do if they had found out. So about the time they're getting old, and 20 years later, they start writing their memoirs. And these memoirs say what they did. And it goes back to the Rothschild quote from way hundreds of years before, and he says, "I don't care who runs the government, as long as I control the currency." And people, we've got that in spades. It was on a little favorite haunt down in Florida, we called it Dirty Ernie's. They had Combs Chowder and stuff, but on the wall, they had all these quotes, and Mr. Dodo. And it was saying, you know, basically, you're elected, we got two parties, they divide us, we're a house divided. And meanwhile, the oligarchs in America, the Fortune 500 families, Standard Oil, who gobbled it up, we thought we had the antitrust suits to control them, uh-uh. It all went down the tubes when Nelson Rockefeller was under Ford, and that's when we got that big energy gas spike. Good for them, bad for us. And that inflation, and where it comes down to you on this board, is that the Fed starts doing all these things. And so then you get, they loan more money on houses, because it's all about the payment. They're not looking at the real deal. And they kept interest rates so low so long that you thought, oh, we got a windfall, we can raise taxes, and you need to roll this millage rate back still. And with the presumption that on rental property, that the landlords would give it, take it off the rent to the tenants, because you just made it worse on the whole base, and it's all energy-driven. It's all about.
Mr. Harfoot, you're five minutes up.
Thanks.
Chairwoman, that concludes the public speaking portion.
Thank you. I need to take a two-minute break. Thank you.[1318.35]
So about the time they're getting old, and 20 years later, they start writing their memoirs. And these memoirs say what they did. And it goes back to the Rothschild quote from way hundreds of years before. He says, "I don't care who runs the government as long as I control the currency." And people, we've got that in spades. It was on a little favorite haunt down in Florida, dirty, we called it Dirty Ernie's. They had Combs Chowder and stuff, but on the wall, they had all these quotes and Mr. Dodo. And it was saying, you know, basically, you're elected, we got two parties, they divide us, we're a house divided. And meanwhile, the oligarchs in America, the Fortune 500 families, Standard Oil, who gobbled it up, we thought we had the antitrust suits to control them, uh-uh. It all went down the tubes when Nelson Rockefeller was under Ford, and that's when we got that big energy gas spike. Good for them, bad for us. And that inflation, and where it comes down to you on this board, is that the Fed starts doing all these things. And so then you get, they loan more money on houses because it's all about the payment. They're not looking at the real deal. And they kept interest rates so low so long that you thought, oh, we got a windfall, we can raise taxes, and you need to roll this millage rate back still. And with the presumption that on rental property, that the landlords would give it, take it off the rent to the tenants, because you just made it worse on the whole base. And it's all energy driven. It's all about.
Mr. Harfoot, your five minutes up.
Thanks.
Chairwoman, that concludes the public speaking portion.
Thank you. I need to take a two-minute break. Thank you. Welcome back to our Board of Commissioners meeting. We are now on our consent tab. Before the meeting, the agenda items that are part of consent were scrolling on the screen, and they will do so after the meeting. With the consent tab, we vote on all of these items in bank. Commissioners, don't forget that we did add one item to consent, and again, that refers to the settlement of Margaret Mary Hayes. With that, Commissioner, I move that we approve the items on the consent agenda as revised and authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. We do have the county managers tab next, however, we did add an additional item to consent to go under the finance tab. And seeing none, it was suggested that we go ahead and just move that after consent. So Commissioners, if you can indulge me, I would like for us to address the matter with respect to the American Rescue Plan at this time.
Good morning. Debbie Blair with the County Attorney's Office to present this item. Cobb received its third and final tranche of its ERA 2 funding on November 4th in the total amount of $6,932,814.33. That is comprised of about 5.4 of regular ERA 2 funding and 1.5 of high-needs ERA 2 funding. This proposal, this agenda item, asks that the Board accept and allocate the funding. This proposal will allocate the funding to our four existing service providers, which are currently home-free, the Center for Family Resources, Must Ministries, and Sweetwater. Under this, or under this proposal, each provider will receive a total of $1,334,642 for allocation to eligible households. This item also includes funding in the amount of $576,741 for a magistrate court-run eviction diversion program, as well as continuing the Atlanta Legal Aid Program, which is an answer clinic within our magistrate court. And that program is requesting $302,272. This also allows for WFN to continue our grant administration, and they were previously approved in the amount of 3%, so that will continue with these reimbursement programs. At this time, it is requested that the Board approve the agenda item as presented.
Thank you, Commissioners. I move that we approve this agenda item as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 4-1 with Commissioner Gamble in opposition. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
We are now moving on to the county managers tab.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, and County Manager. Our item this morning is for the Board to approve the reapportionment, or the reappropriation of ARPA funds to offset personnel costs in various county agencies. Cobb County Government has staff attorneys and investigators in multiple agencies serving different capacities. Many of these positions were not included in the recently completed pay class study and are being taken by other agencies for higher salaries. The County Manager's Office worked in conjunction with the leadership of these agencies to make the needed salary adjustments, which will make us more competitive in the market. Treasury guidance allows governments to be reimbursed a percentage of the salaries of employee classes that need retention efforts. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve the reappropriation of ARPA funds in an amount not to exceed $786,801.38 to offset personal costs for staff attorneys and investigators in various departments, authorize corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved as presented. Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you. We are now at our transportation tab.
Good morning again. DOT has nine items for Board's consideration this morning. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize signalization of intersections on Stilesboro Road at Shillings Road, project number TR 515A, and on Marcell Road at Ford's Road, project number B 2573. Approve a contract with Bartow Paving Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $2,192,457.72 for traffic signal installations on both projects. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under OCGA Section 32-3-4. Authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on one parcel on Mac Dobbs Road, project number X 2606. Adopt resolutions and orders in form substantially similar to the attached and as approved by the County Attorney's Office and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number Three Final to Project Number X 2749, Task Order Number One to the 2018 Master Task Order Contract with Low Engineers LLC. A savings to the project in the amount of $5,760 for engineering design of Hickory Growth Place Sidewalk. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. Before my motion, I would like to just thank the community for their patience. This was delayed for different reasons, water and utilities, and, and it's a savings. So thank you. Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the Consultant Services Agreement with Gretchen Smith. A savings to the project in the amount of $104,134.05 for engineering design services of Willio Road over Willio Creek, project number X 2122. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Supplemental Agreement Number One to the Consultant Services Agreement with American Engineers Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $30,000 for engineering design of roadway improvements on Mac Dobbs Road, project number X 2606. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number Two Final to the contract with C.W. Matthews Contracting Company Incorporated. A savings to the project in the amount of $343,292.39 for construction of Old 41 Highway Bridge over CSX Railroad, project number X 2116. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Project Number B 2541, Task Order Number One to the 2022 Master Task Order Contract with Atlas Technical Consultants LLC in an amount not to exceed $483,327.50 for transportation planning and engineering services for Cobb Parkway at McCollum Parkway, Kennesaw-DuWest Road, Old 41 Highway realignment. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Drew, just for the record.
Yes.
The city of Kennesaw is aware that we are moving forward with this, and they are a stakeholder in this process.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any more comments? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by the County Manager authorizing emergency drainage repairs on Gordy Parkway in response to voids compromising the integrity of roadway. Approve a contract with C.W. Matthews Contracting Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $499,212.16 for said repairs. Project Number B 2238. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Thank you for the response that this should be opened back up this week, by the end of this week. Thank you.
All right. Any additional comments? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. And our final item this morning is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the revised budget and current schedule for the 2016 Transportation Improvements Program funded primarily by the 2016 Special Purpose Local Auction Sales Tax and authorize the corresponding budget transactions per the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program budget and schedule attached.
All right, so moved as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
We are now at our Support Services tab.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, and County Manager. Our item this morning is a joint item between the Sheriff's Office and Information Services to request the Board of Commissioners to authorize the Purchasing Director to purchase computers for the Cobb County Sheriff's Office under provisions of Georgia Department of Administrative Services Georgia End-User Computing Agreement with Dell Marketing LP in an amount not to exceed $123,822.90, 2016 SPOS Project Countywide Improvements Program X 1070, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
All right, so moved as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you. We are now at our second public comment.
Yes, Chairwoman, there's no one signed up.
All right, no speakers. We will now move on to the Commissioners' Public Address, and we'll begin with Commissioner Gamble.
Thank you, and yesterday is Election Day. Thank you to all of those who are working the polls, whether you are Cobb County employees that are helping and others. Thank you very much. Our Green Light for Veterans is shining upon us for light and hope and support. Join Operation Green Light, and let's turn Cobb County green for our veterans. As part of Operation Green Light for Veterans, Cobb County is illuminating our building green, and we encourage individuals and businesses to join us by changing one light bulb in the entryway of your house or business to a green bulb. By shining a green light, we let veterans know that they are seen, appreciated, and supported. Peccans are here. Selling Peccans is to benefit the children, and this is a program done by the kids named Kiwanis. You can contact your local Kiwanian to purchase, and they are located at the Lost Mountain Senior Center, located, or I'm sorry, the Lost Mountain Club is located at the West Cobb Senior Center, which is 4915 Dallas Highway in Powder Springs. They are $11 a bag, and again, see the West Cobb Senior Center. Point Settas. It's officially okay to begin your holiday decorating. Start by ordering point settas from the Cobb County UGA Extension. Order now and pick up on November 19th at 678 South Cobb Drive in Marietta. And again, these point settas will be ready to pick up on November 19th. And Happy Veterans Day. You can celebrate veterans with a parade and ceremony in Marietta. The Marietta Veterans Day Parade will kick off at 11:00 a.m. on Friday, November 11th, starting at Roswell Street Baptist Church and parading through Marietta Square. At noon, there will be a Veterans Day ceremony on the square, and the parade is presented by the Kiwanis Club of Marietta, the City of Marietta, and the Aviation, History, and Technology Center. The grand marshal and keynote speaker this year is Captain Kent Tuna Hepler of the United States Navy. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson.
Sure thing. Yes, so Happy Native American Heritage Month, and also Veterans Day this coming Friday, as mentioned, both of these are mentioned earlier. So please celebrate appropriately and always find time to reflect on those that have sacrificed a lot for us to be able to vote. And certainly Happy Election Day, but maintain all of our freedoms here. So postponed the town hall that was scheduled for this Thursday, which of course includes a lot of our partners, both at, both from the government perspective and our other governing bodies for some of our locales, including the school board, et cetera. We are postponing it until next month. It'll, it just didn't work out for this Thursday. But stay tuned to that, that new date coming up soon. Service Academy Information Day, so if you have a high school or interested in attending a service academy, join our Education Cabinet Chair Laura Judge at the First District Two Service Academy Information Day. This is an opportunity for community members to meet with admission representatives and local parent clubs to learn about applying to the service academies. The event will take place on November 19th, 9:00 a.m. through noon at Jim R. Miller Park Event. And for more information, feel free to take a picture of the QR code. So proud of this young lady. If you have known for the last couple of, well, a couple of weeks ago, she had been studying for several months now, but preparing for the LSAT, and she just got her scores back, and she killed it with a 176 out of 180.
Excellent.
So we are so proud. We are so proud of Leah, and obviously, serving my office and all of our constituents even handily with compassion and with prompt service, and just really appreciate you. So excited for the next part of your journey. Thank you.
So is she going to Emory Law School?
We are just not going to jinx, but she is, jinx it, but she is in the process of applying for law schools right now. All right, GIS Day, Geographic Information Systems Day, better known as GIS Day, is a part of Geography Week at Cobb County's GIS staff, is a part of Geography Week, and Cobb County's GIS staff has a fun celebration planned for you from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Friday, November 18th at Sula Library and Cultural Arts Center. This free event will include maps, posters, talks, a virtual fun run-walk, raffles, and printables. The primary function of GIS is to provide a visual representation of data. GIS Day was created to celebrate the technology of geographic information systems and to mark the importance of geography and its usefulness in our everyday lives. This event will show you how GIS is used and showcase the many ways in which GIS can be used in real-world applications. Check out more information at cobbcounty.org/library. And again, Happy Election Day. Please go vote if you have not, but if you have, awesome, and thank you for everyone who's servicing our elections.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. November is National Adopt a Senior Pet Month. Through November, when you find your forever friend at Cobb County Animal Services, it's $40 to adopt, adopt all pets five years old or more. Go to cobbcounty.org/pets to view the available pets and to make an appointment. Every Monday in the parking lot at Cobb County Animal Services, you can adopt your forever friend from Cobb County, from the shelter. You can stop by and be a forever family for a shelter pet. Dogs and cats are available to adopt, and no appointment necessary. We had number 229 for Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets. It continues to grow, and this is our 229th adoption since the beginning of the program. I would like to thank Mr. Galloway pictured here for giving a new home to this beautiful lady. She's a sweet pup and deserves lots of love. Mr. Galloway served 24 years in the U.S. Air Force, and we thank him for his many years of dedication to our country and for supporting this program. The Cobb Library's Accessibility Services Department invite you to a free adoption event from 11, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. I'm sorry. The slide on the right, in, in conjunction with the Cobb Library's Accessibility Services Department, we invite you to a free adoption event from 11 to 1 on Saturday, December 3rd at the Schweitzer Library, 266 Roswell Street. For more information, you can scan the QR code or contact the Accessibility Department at 7705-282376. And this Thursday, the community is invited to attend the Cobb County Public Library dedication of the Mike Boy's Military Collection and the Mike and Judy Boy's Study Room at 2:00 p.m. Thursday, November 10th at the North Cobb Regional Library located at 3535 Old Highway 41 Northwest in Kennesaw. You can RSVP by emailing dinabonastill@cobbcounty.org or call 7705-282324. The District Three Listening Session for the Five-Year Strategic Plan is November 16th, I'm sorry, Tuesday, November 15th at 6:00 p.m. at the Mountain View Community Center at 3400 Sandy Plains Road. There will be other District Four and District Two meetings as well later on, and you can access the Cobb County website for more information. Happy Veterans Day. This Friday, county offices will be closed in observance, and there's a list of many events happening throughout the county to honor all who served, and that can be found at cobbcounty.org. Also, you can participate in Operation Green Light, next slide, and show your support for veterans by changing a porch light or other light in your home to a green bulb and lighting it through Veterans Day, November 11th. Also, the City of Marietta Veterans Parade is the, is on Friday at 11:00 a.m. It starts at Roswell Street Baptist Church, the parade, and ends at the square with the ceremonies to follow. So be sure and thank a veteran, and be sure to vote if you haven't already. Today's the last day. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheffield. Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. November is Native American Heritage Month, or as it is commonly referred to as American Indian and Alaskan Native Heritage Month. The month is a time to celebrate rich and diverse cultures, traditions, and histories, and to acknowledge the important contributions of Native people. Heritage Month is also an opportune time to educate the public about tribes, to raise general awareness about the unique challenges Native people have faced both historically and in the present, and ways in which tribal citizens have worked to conquer those challenges. So here's a fieldbook story. Congratulations to Mr. Daquan Owens on the recent purchase of his home. Mr. Owens attended our inaugural Path to Home Ownership Seminar in 2021 and our inaugural financial workshop earlier this year. His determination to purchase a home for the holidays has paid off. A special thanks to our community partners in Demetrius Lockett of Southeast Mortgage for making Mr. Owens' dream of owning a home a reality. Cobb County Government, in partnership with Accenture, will conduct the community listening session and share information regarding the ongoing development of the countywide comprehensive five-year strategic plan. This is an opportunity for all community members to impact the future of the county through sharing experiences, insights, and aspirations with district and county leadership. The District IV meeting will be held on November 16th from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Cobb Police Training Academy, located at 2435 East-West Connector in Austell. Reflections of Trinity in partnership with Linked Up Church would like to invite you to the annual Thanksgiving Community Food Distribution Event on Saturday, November 19th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Linked Up Church, located at 4331 Brownsville Road in Powder Springs. Approximately 1,500 families will be served this year, and they are seeking assistance. You may donate or volunteer. To donate, visit reflectionsoftrinity.org, or to volunteer, contact Eddie Perez at 770-222-6511. Please note that District IV's monthly In-the-Zone Meeting will be held on November 30th at 7:00 p.m. Planning Commissioner Michael Hughes and I will discuss December zoning cases and recap November's BOC decisions. Our monthly In-the-Zone community meetings are a great way to learn firsthand about zoning applications and potential development in our community. Please email didra.watts@cobbcounty.org for the meeting link. Again, the meeting has been postponed or rescheduled for the following Wednesday, which is on November 30th. It is my hope that you will be able to join us. Finally, thank you does not seem like a strong enough sentiment to express the gratitude that I have for the men and women who sacrificed their time, families, and made the ultimate sacrifice of their lives to protect all of us and our freedom. We are forever grateful for your service. Happy Veterans Day.
Thank you, Commissioner. In wrapping up, I want to encourage everyone to please honor our veterans and the many who have sacrificed on our behalf to please go vote by the end of today, if you have not done so already. You have until 7:00 p.m. at your voting district. Thank you, and this adjourns our meeting.